Commissioner Zubor, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Atariah?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Egenberger is not here. Commissioner Engel is not here. Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Good evening.
Mr. Green?
I am here.
Chairman Green, excuse me. Commissioner Okon?
Here.
Commissioner Perkins is not here. And Commissioner Zubor is here.
Okay. And we have our community planner Jeff Coule and our deputy director Christopher Stockline. And all of you, welcome and welcome to those that are going to be watching at home. In case you hadn't noticed, it's a little bit cold out there. I'm going to warm up the meeting right off the bat. I heard before I left, by the weekend, it's going to be in the 40s.
Woo!
Isn't that great that that's what turns us on? And then it's the 40s? Okay. We've got, we last met February 4th, and there are minutes associated with that meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Okon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, tonight, we do have an agenda of three items. One public hearing, and we've got some old business to take care of, and some new business to take care of. We get into the public hearing, which is the first one. Well, first of all, do I hear a motion to accept this agenda?
So moved.
This is work.
And is any additions from staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The first public hearing, or the first item, is a public hearing for the Oakwood Healthcare Fillmore Place rezoning, where we're considering a request to rezone from LIR, which is Light Industrial Research, to our six single-family residential. This property is located north of Michigan Avenue and west of Beck. Jeff, could you give us more detail?
Yes, this is a request to rezone the property as you described. It's approximately 100 acres south of Chatterton, on the west side of Beck Road, north of the industrial complex on Michigan Avenue, from Light Industrial Research to R6, which is a single-family attached residential district, which is similar to the same zoning as what's to the north and to the west of the property. As you remember, this 100 acres was under a plan development agreement for Oakwood. That expired last year. Oakwood has sold, or is in the process of selling, this holding to another developer. Back in approximately 15 months ago, the planning commission amended the master plan to change the designation on this property from Light Industrial to Medium High Density Residential, which allows up to eight units per acre, which would be consistent with the R6 zoning. So there is a designation on the master plan that development in this area requires it to be done by plan development. So they can't do it by straight zoning. So they would have to come back and do an overall master plan for the 100 acres, so you could, you know, look at specifically how they were going to use the 100 acres. You know, maybe a combination of apartments. It could be condos. It could be senior housing. You know, it could be assisted living. It could be a combination of all of those. So, you know, we don't know exactly what the composition of the property will be yet, but R6 would accommodate all of those types of uses. So based on the master plan and all the surrounding zoning, industrial to the south and, you know, commercial to the east, R6 to the north and the west, we feel this is a proper transition from the existing residential to the north, to the higher intensity uses along Michigan Avenue, and we would recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you very much. It is a public hearing. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Zubor.
Second.
Support by Commissioner Okon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Is there anyone to speak further on the project?
There is a project sponsor, is Tim Anial. Tim, you want to go up to the podium and answer any questions? Is Tim here?
If you'd like to add to what Jeff has said, come on up to the podium.
I don't know who's representing the property tonight, so...
I don't have anything to add. My name's Bill Anderson. I'm with Atwell. We'll be the planners and engineers. And also, the applicants are here as well. Kevin Spitzizen. But we're here for any questions.
Welcome. Okay. All right. Why don't we just take it one commissioner at a time? We're going to start down here with Commissioner Okon. Do you?
Want to open the public hearing first?
Questions?
Public hearing.
I'm sorry? Well, we can do it either way, if you want to. Any comments from the audience on this project? Okay. We've got a motion to close the public hearing at 7:05 by Commissioner Okon and support by Commissioner Zubor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, Commissioner Okon.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett?
No, I have no questions. It looks pretty straightforward to me. Thank you.
The only question I have, and I know that it's, we're early in this process, the intent, as Jeff has outlined, there's a lot of different areas, different avenues. There's got to be an intent there. Can you share that with us? Or is that still too early to talk about?
It's pretty early, so we ought to look at the senior components.
Okay. Bill, if you're going to talk, you need to go to the podium.
We need you to go to the mic. Yep. You thought you'd get away from public speaking.
No, you're right. It is early, but as Jeff indicated, we're looking at a couple of senior components to it, so there'll be multiple uses. And as you know, on the south end, there was a drain relocation and everything, so we've looked at multiple concepts, nothing too finite at this point.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Commissioner Zubor, do you have anything?
No. It seems straightforward. It fits with the master plan. I don't have any issues with it.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
I don't know. Jeff, have you had spoken about traffic study at all there?
You know, the plan development, when they come in with the PDD request, that requires a traffic analysis.
Yeah, we're just rezoning today, but...
Right.
We said something about a senior component, which is new this time from, I'm just wondering...
Oh, okay. Yeah, I can hardly hear you.
Oh, sorry. You had said something about a senior component, so what is it, what did you mean by that? Just all housing or a section of it senior, or...
We're just discussions with a couple of assisted living.
Hey, we'll need your name for the record.
Steve Schaefer. Assisted living, as well as some other senior living type arrangements. It'd be nice if we could do something, something that's sort of staged, where people can remain and maybe move into another facility. But we think this is well-suited, and the zoning would certainly allow us to do that, so...
So would that be the whole facility, or a part of it, or you're looking?
Oh, no. That'd be about 12 acres. We actually have been contacted by daycare, which is the completely opposite end of the spectrum. But we'll be looking at a number of different uses, but I think our target audience is going to be senior.
Jeff, since he brought that up, is that, should that come about, is that something that would require special land use for the daycare?
Well, not if they incorporate all of those uses within the plan development. Under R6, I can't remember whether or not daycare is permitted or special land use. But, you know, Beck Road Quarter being a high commuter quarter, I can see where a daycare center would be, wanting to be near Beck and Geddes. So it's, you know, to me, it's right near the commercial areas, across the street from apartments, right next to commercial. I think it would be an appropriate use. You know what? I think we need to look at later on, when they bring a concept in, is how all those uses fit together, so...
Commissioner Atariah?
I don't have any questions at this point.
Oh, I think your mic is off. Anyway.
They need to speak directly into it, I think, so...
Any questions at this point? Thank you. I guess I say nothing further?
I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead. Make a motion, Commissioner Zubor.
I move to recommend approval of the request to rezone tax parcel number 125-990002-709 from LI-R, Light Industrial Research, to R6, Single Family Attached Residential District.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zubor, and I believe support by Commissioner Graham Hudek. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Atariah?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes. And Chairman Green?
That is a yes. And their next step would then be to go to the board, right?
Right. The board requires two readings for a zoning ordinance amendment, so the first reading will likely go at their, the final meeting of the board in March, in about three weeks.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you for coming out today.
Yeah. Good luck.
Our second item of business is the Park Creek of Canton, where we're considering a preliminary PDD approval. We need to remove the item which was tabled at our January meeting. Do I hear a motion to remove that item?
So moved.
All right. We've got a motion to remove that tabled item by Commissioner Graham Hudek and support by Commissioner Zubor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. This property is located north of Geddes, between Beck and Denton. Could you refresh everyone on that, Jeff? What's going on there?
What the plans here? If you remember, in January, we talked about approximately 80 acres there at Beck and Geddes Road. It was originally part of the Charing Cross Plan Development. First phase of that to the north was completed some time ago, and the remaining portion of this basically fell to the wayside when the PDD expired. So basically, they're starting all over with this. Some of the utilities and roads, as you can see, you know, some of the grading for the roads, and some of the utility work on the west side of this site has already been, you know, installed way back when, because they had to bring the water main all the way out to Geddes Road. So some of the infrastructures in, which provides, you know, some constraints in terms of, unless we want to rip all the, you know, the water main and things up and start over, they're trying to use some of what's there already, so they don't have to redo and redig a lot of those underground utilities. So the proposal now is 75 site condominiums and 91 detached condos, active adult kind of, single-family or a single-level condominiums, for a total of 166 residential units on the 89 acres. So as we know, each plan development has to demonstrate a definite benefit to the community. So in this particular proposal, the MI Homes is proposing to maintain a 9.3-acre site on the corner. At this point, it's a private park in the northwest corner of Beck and Geddes. And then they also have 38 acres of general common space, so they're saving over 57% of the site as common open space and preservation area. The park is proposed includes a fitness area and playground, a park trail, and roadway landscaping along the edges of the park. That's more specifically shown on Sheet 3 of the concept plan in your packet, and I can bring that up in a minute. Sidewalks will also be installed along Geddes Road and along Beck Road to connect with the sidewalk at the entry to Charing Cross along Beck Road, including a pedestrian bridge crossing at the Fowler Creek on Beck Road. There's a gap, and they're just south of Charing Cross, where they have to cross that with a pedestrian bridge. Last time we met, their, the analysis of their traffic study wasn't quite done, so we've completed that, and there's been recommendations from our traffic consultant and agreement with MI Homes. You know, they have to do certain improvements at their own entrances in terms of extending tapers and connecting, you know, interconnecting, you know, right turn lanes and things based on the existing geometry along Beck and Geddes Road. So that's something that's required by them to do regardless of the PDD. What they're proposing to do as part of the benefit is go ahead and make the improvements to the intersection, which would add left turn signals at the intersection. Right now, there's no left protects at the intersection. So that was shown to be warranted by the traffic study. That's something that's not caused by them. That's an existing condition that they are proposing to remedy, so that can be, you know, shown as a demonstrated benefit to the development, because it's something we're getting that's not required of them to do normally. So those are, in a nutshell, the overview of the improvements. They are still proposing to use mostly, you know, hardy plank-sided houses utilizing an arts and crafts style of architecture. We have a provision in the zoning code that allows them to omit the 50% brick if they are truly building a period-style home. So I looked at the plans, based on what they're showing. I looked at the criteria. I got Dawn's input on what things that they should be adding to the houses to make sure they're done properly to meet the requirements for that style of home. So those guidelines are basically listed on the drawings for the houses, and they're written into the agreement in terms of what they have to do. For example, they, right now, if you remember, and we can bring up the house plans here in a minute, the, you know, they only had, you know, brick on a portion of the lower level. So this will require them to put brick or stone around the entire base of the building up to the sill line to make sure that house is grounded. They have to use, you know, properly divided windows. They have to add window heads. They have to do full return cornices instead of boxed-out cornices on the roof lines, you know, at the gables and eve lines. So it's similar to what we've required in Cherry Hill Village for similar-style homes, that we've basically taken those, and Dawn was kind enough to review those and add some things in, which would basically give those houses the feel and flavor they should have based on that style of architecture. So staff is comfortable with that. I don't know what the planning commission will feel like, and we can look at these in a minute as we go through the discussion. We've got Nikki Jeffries is here with MI Homes. She can kind of explain to you some of the changes they made to the plan based on planning commission comments. They did flip the detached condos, which are the single-family and the two-story houses. So the two-story houses are on the west, the single-family is over to the east now, which relate well to Villa Maples, Maple Villas, which is just to the east on Beck Road there. So Nikki?
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
I'll basically flip through the drawings as we talk, so if you want to see something specifically...
I think this is perfect right now, Jeff. Good evening. I'm Nikki Jeffries. I'm with MI Homes of Michigan. I was here, I think, in January to talk about this project. So I'm not going to go through our whole presentation again. I just kind of want to highlight some of the changes and what's happened since we were here in January. Jeff gave a great outline here. I think there was about four, like, hot-button items when we were here in January, and I think we've hopefully been able to address all four of them. The first was the site plan layout. Originally, as Jeff mentioned here, we were doing, we are still doing two housing products. One is a more of a typical single-family, two-story colonial type, and the other is a active-adult ranch age-targeted product. Originally, the ranches were on the west side of the site, with the single-family on the east. And after a lot of discussion here, I think, I think it was the preference of this commission, and I think even some of the audience members as well, that we flip-flop the site and do the single-family lots on the west side, where we are backing up to additional, more single-family on our west with Central Park South, and then we're also just directly south of Charing Cross. We're actually tying into their road and continuing the road down, so it will be single-family all the way down Haverford Drive there from Charing Cross and then into our development. So we did flip that. The overall total units is the same as what we were at before, which is 166. The, it's a slightly different number of the two. We have 91 of the active-adult units and 75 of the single-family, which is just a little bit different than what it was before. So this gives us the single-family next to single-family, and then goes to the ranch product as we go east, and then towards, across the street to the south and to the east, where you go to the multifamily. So that has been flip-flop from what you saw before. In addition, the traffic study has now been reviewed by your consultant, and we made a few minor revisions based on their comments. As Jeff mentioned, the, there's a deficiency at the intersection that's existing as of today. In all directions, the left-hand turns are deficient. The queue is too long. There are left-hand turn lanes there, but there's no signal to give you a dedicated left-hand turn for, in any direction. So what we're proposing is to add the actual signals to the existing signal for each direction at left turn, so there'll be a dedicated left for all directions. We have spoken with Wayne County, who obviously would be involved with this, and they are on board with that as well, and agree that it is needed one, and that it can be added to the existing intersection. In addition, I think our traffic consultants mentioned that timing that signal differently, which will obviously happen once we add left turns, and that that would help, you know, also with the left-hand turn issues. As part of our, you know, what we would have to do no matter what is add a left-hand turn lane at both of our entrances. That is warranted, I think, for a final build-out, so we'll be, that will be part of our plans. We'll be working with Wayne County to add the left-hand turn passing lanes at both Beck and Geddes, at our entrances as well. Moving on, the park, we had quite a bit of discussion about last time. As you can see, we've got the park located kind of right at the intersection there, that you can see kind of from, right from the intersection on the southeast corner of our site. And I thought the, I don't know if we have a specific park plan anymore on here, Jeff. I think just the overall site plan.
It's on page, yeah, it's on page three, I think.
No, it shows the park, I think, just on the site plan, I think, the overall, yeah. So we've got about 9.3 acres here that is going to be a park. We did, we did talk with both the planning department and the leisure services department about this becoming a public park, and after a lot of discussion, we were told the preference is to stay private. But we are still planning to amenitize this park. We're planning to put in a kids' playscape area, an adult fitness court area, which we talked about before, I believe. And then there's going to be like a parking lot. There's going to be a trailway, benches. We're going to do some nice landscaping and whatnot in there as well. So that is still part of the plan. It's just a private park instead of a public park now. And that is part of the 50%, or over 50%, 57% total open space on the site. Lastly, the big, the last big discussion we had in January was on the architecture. I think we've got, oh, Jeff's got some photos for you. These are, this is the housing product. It's not exactly what we're going to build, because as you can see, there's no, there's no brick or stone on the sides of these, but this gives you an idea of what they look like. This is, these are actual photos of this architecture down in Columbus, where we're currently building it, or just outside of Columbus. It's been a really popular product for us, and it's been really successful down there. So we are really excited to bring it to southeast Michigan. It's a craftsman farmhouse-style architecture, which is becoming very popular nowadays. We worked with both Mr. Coule and Commissioner Zubor on coming up with some of the architectural requirements that would be required for every, every one of these houses, and we've added all of this language to both the plans and then the PDD agreement. Jeff kind of went through it just to highlight, there would be a minimum of three foot of brick or stone required on all elevations, meaning front, side, and rear. The side elevations on the corner lots are going to be upgraded with additional windows and architectural features as well, since it's a secondary facade. Gables will have full-return cornices rather than the boxed-out returns. We have some, we have some detail on window trim, and also the garage doors are going to be upgraded, whereas here, like, this is not an upgraded garage door. But, but I just wanted to give you some actual photos rather than renderings of how they look down in Ohio. As Jeff mentioned, your zoning ordinance does, or your schedule of regulations does allow exceptions on the minimum brick if we, if we go with a typical, or a different architectural style. So that's what we're going to be requesting from you guys. We did, we did look at, you know, we did a market study on the housing prices on the adjacent, on the adjacent neighborhoods around us, both Charing Cross, Central Park South, and I think there was one other, Meadow Village, which is just kind of kitty-corner across the intersection from us. We looked at comps in the last year. The average square footage between those three, for houses that have sold, was 2,330 square feet. The average sale price was $306,000, and the average price per square foot was $133. We did, I then looked at without Meadow Village across the street, so just Charing Cross and Central Park South. The averages there were, the average sales price was $329,141 a square foot. So we're going to be very comparable. We're looking at, we're targeting low to mid 300s with these. The smallest single-family could even go for high 2s, but we'll really be transacting typically in the, in the low to mid 3s with a price per square foot of about 165 to 180. So we're actually going to be above, because we're new construction, above kind of the existing subdivisions nearby. With that, I'd love to open it up to questions and discussions on the changes we've made.
Okay. Thank you very much for that description. I'm going to basically just kind of like free-for-all it here, and for those who want to, just let me know, you know, if you have something you want to say, or...
Sure.
Okay. Go ahead. Commissioner Bennett?
May I mean, is this located in Plymouth Canton schools?
No, it's actually in Vampirian School District.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for your changes. I think your changes that you've shown from January meeting, big improvement. I appreciate flipping the site plan around. I think it makes a lot more sense now. The improvement to the intersection is great to hear, that you're willing to do that. I think the elevations look terrific. I think it's going to be a great product, and I think at the end of the day, it's really going to be a huge benefit for the, for the community. So thank you for the changes.
Thank you.
Down here, have anything to say? Go ahead.
I appreciate you being open to our feedback very much, so thank you.
Yeah, no, it's why we have planning commissions. I think it, I think the site plan turned out better, and I think it's, I think, you know, we went back and forth originally on what way, you know, what best made sense, and I think we came up with probably the best, the best plan now, after your feedback. Yeah, we're really excited.
Why did you, what did you change? What do you think improved it?
Just put me on the spot.
You're a wonderful architect.
Well, I think Jeff had a lot of really good feedback. I had added things about the window detail, the trim on the windows, and I don't remember if I said garage doors or you did. Jeff had a lot of, he had mainly had a list, and I just added a couple.
And most of those, I kind of pulled from our standards in Cherry Hill Village in terms of what we required on those houses. These houses are similar to many of the houses in Cherry Hill Village. So if we're going to have houses without brick, and they are attempting to mimic a, you know, historic period house, they should be true to that style. So what I came up with and what Dawn added, just will add what, some three-dimensionality to the buildings, where you see, you know, the boxed-out cornices on the front of these houses. You'll have a full cornice return that'll have, you know, a shingled edge to it like they are in Cherry Hill Village. You know, the window heads, instead of being flat on the window, you know, they'll have to protrude and have a drip edge on them. I think you add, I think you added the window sills to make sure the sills were three-dimensional and weren't flat to the facade, to those kinds of things. Just having the right kind of window proportions and the, make sure the divisions in the windows is correct, instead of having, you know, sheet glass on the windows like a lot of, you know, houses, you know, have. So, you know, we, I think in all of our products, even if I review them internally, a lot of the times, we'll make those suggestions regardless of whether they're required or not, just to make sure that, you know, we push the builders to do a better job than they would in other communities, I guess.
What percent brick are they now, then?
Well, the only brick that is required to be on, they may have some, you know, styles of brick that have more brick on them than others.
Right.
You know, they, they could have a house that's all brick if they want to.
Correct.
But the only, but the minimum amount of brick will be similar to Cherry Hill Village, which will have just brick up to basically the sill line, basically, around all four sides.
They're saying a three-foot minimum all the way around.
So, I mean, what they showed to you last time, they didn't have any brick or masonry on the other three sides at all. They just had masonry on the front, up to the windows. You know, they're building in Cherry Hill Village now in the corners, they're building those single-family, those single-story, you know, buildings there. So you could take a look at those to see kind of what they're building currently. These will probably, the single story will probably be pretty similar to the ones in the corners, so...
We actually, yeah, it's similar to the corners, and we actually were, it's, now We actually, yeah, it's similar to the corners, and we actually were, it's, now that we, now that we have access to the, you know, the whole MI Homes housing product line, which we, we didn't before when we were just pinnacle homes. You know, they've got some floor plans and some elevations that are different than what we've built before, but, but have been, you know, hugely successful in other places. So that, so we're Cherry Hill-type style, and then we're bringing in just a few additional elevations that we didn't, that we didn't build before, that we, you know, have been so successful at other places.
Why the switch from a public to a private park?
Well, I think what happened was, is, is the, the cost of the park got to be fairly excessive as a public park because you had to put a bathroom facility in it, you needed more parking. I mean, the bathroom facility itself was pretty expensive. Where, you know, once they take those out, then they can put whatever amenities they want into it, you know, to serve their residents. And we're still getting the preserved park space, you know, on the corner. So people are going to walk through there regardless of whether they live there or not. And we're going to have sidewalks along Cherry Hill, or along Geddes, and along Beck. So it's, so we're still getting the preserved open space on the corner, which I think was important to the supervisor regardless of whether it was a public park or a private park. We're still getting many of the amenities that I think the people in the neighborhood will be looking for. And then the Canton Township won't have to take care of it, so.
Yeah, it'll be.
It'll be a private park. So it'll be something, you know, not any different than, a lot of our subdivisions have private parks. You know, Cherry Hill Village has playgrounds and parks in there that serve their residents, you know, other people meander through there. So it's.
So the association then will, will have to take care of it?
Right. Yeah, it's their park, it'll be association property.
But.
It's not going to be.
Obviously, obviously you're not going to.
It's not a public park.
Be able to police, it'll still be public in, in a sense.
Well, I mean, you know, unless the association's going to police people walking through their park, so.
I'm doubting that will happen, unless somebody was, you know, doing something illegal in the park.
I mean, one of the issues was if we had taken it over as a public park, they could only afford to do so many amenities in there. And we didn't want to take over a park where we were going to have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars finishing it. And then, and then taking over the cost of maintaining it. So, so this is kind of the best of both worlds, and I think it's important, many of our newer developments have parks in them. And one thing is, is we're still meeting the need in the community for recreation in those areas. But the nice thing is, is the Canton Township, from a tax standpoint, doesn't have to pay to maintain it in perpetuity. So we kind of get, you know, a win-win situation when a developer's willing to go ahead and basically develop amenities in the park and making it useful, rather than just leaving, I mean, this piece of land on the corner has some stand-up trees on it, but by itself isn't really anything outstanding. But it'll be a great amenity for the people buying, and it's, and it's netted value. It will add value to those homes in the short term and the long term, too, because people will buy in a community that has those amenities in it.
However, that was originally part of the community benefit aspect of the PDD, correct?
Right, but the community benefit is now they're taking care of the intersection improvements that they aren't required to. Plus, they're still preserving that area. Plus, they're still providing the bridge along Geddes Road, or along Beck Road to, to make those sidewalk connections along Beck. Those kinds of things, so they're still.
That is, most of the neighbors in the area would rather have the left-hand lane.
I mean, the minimum open space is 25%. They're preserving 57%, plus they're providing amenities. And the amen, the community benefit doesn't have to be the overall community. Community benefit could be localized, you know, to the, to the area that they're serving, so.
We're still spending the same amount on the park as what we could before. It was, well, between the park and the signal. It was just with the public park, we had, like Jeff mentioned, we had to do a bathroom facility and a really large parking lot. So then we start to get away from being able to do the actual place, playscape, and the fitness, and that kind of stuff. So it just seemed like we could still have a park that was usable and nice and open space that people would enjoy, but maybe not go overboard on, you know, a bathroom facility and that kind of thing that, you know, was starting to make it difficult for, for us to afford. And then we, you know, we were looking to the township, and I know that there's not available money for that either. But we obviously still want a park, and we, and we still intend to spend money on it to make it a nice park that people are going to want to use.
Yeah, we probably would have added another soccer field.
We, we went back and forth a lot on the soccer field, whether or not it was needed. I know there's a lot of soccer fields here, though.
Is there a possibility? One of the things that struck me was, that corner is, is getting busier and busier, as you know. And, but looking at the landscaping of that corner piece, that big open area right there, to me, it calls for just something special. I know the original plan there was, there was going to be a big pond there. And I know that, that's not going to happen because we need.
The original plan had apartments there, Greg.
But on the corner, but on the corner itself, there was a pond, okay. And, and I'm not asking for that, but it seems to me landscaping-wise, we need something a little bit more corner-piece-ish.
Yeah, something.
Kind of like, that says, you know, wow, this is quality.
Well, I think that.
Maybe you could work with staff on that?
Yeah, I definitely.
Well, I think we can get that into the final PDD and site plan when we get into the final landscape plan. Because they'll want, as an entry to their development, they'll want.
We're going to want something nice. And I know there's, I mean, we have to do, we're doing sidewalk on frontage the whole way down to the intersection. And there's, I think there's landscaping required for the, just along the sidewalk. So there's definitely, we want to add landscaping down there.
I was going to ask you about that, those two houses that are not part of this proposal, it, it shows on the plan that, that, that that's there?
Oh, you're talking about further, further to the west?
On Geddes Road.
Well, we are.
There's a little jog.
They're going to try to get the easements to continue the sidewalk across.
Right. And there's a possibility, I think right now it's being shown as sidewalk still within the existing right-of-way. But I mean, once we get into the engineering, that may or may not work, obviously. So either we'll do that, we'll try to get the easement, you know, if an easement is needed. It's probably a grading easement, at least that's needed. So we are going to, to try to make that connection. Obviously, I can't control another, another property owner. But we are, you know, no matter what, we will also make connections, you know, the little section beyond that, there's a connection kind of coming up from the main road sidewalk up to the sidewalk in our development. So we're trying to make a very walkable, trail-friendly community, no matter what. And we will, we will pursue getting, getting the sidewalk there.
Well, please do, because there's nothing worse than to be taking a walk. And then you have to make a choice of, well, do I walk across the, the snow in their lawn and everything else? Or do I go out, out on the road and risk my, my safety?
Of course, yeah. We, we want to build that sidewalk and, and are hoping that, that that's something that can be done. So we'll be, once we get into the final PD, we'll, you know, we have made, I think, we've talked to the guy, but we don't, we don't have any form of agreement quite yet, since we're still early on.
Okay, I know, I also noticed on the corner at Beck and Geddes, I see little stub sidewalks there that are not there now. Is that part of the community benefit as well?
Yeah, that's going to be part of, I know we spoke with.
They'll finish, they'll have to finish the crosswalks.
Wayne County, yeah, the crosswalks, right?
And Wayne County won't allow us, they won't allow us to finish the crosswalks until there's something to cross, too. So on the east side, we did bring the sidewalk stubs out so you can cross north-south on the east side. So they'll have to finish their corner, so.
All right, and I had another question about sidewalks. Oh, at, at both ends, at the north side of Beck, is, I can't quite tell there, the sidewalk goes, goes up to Sharing Cross. Is that, is that going to connect to anything at Sharing Cross, like their sidewalk?
Well, they have, they have their own sidewalk that I think goes to their property line and just ends right now.
Right.
So we, it's, ours is going to go all the way to that, yeah.
And then on the south side, going to the, the subdivision to the west?
Yep.
It's the same scenario, you're going to go to their sidewalk?
It'll, it'll connect with Central Park South.
Central Park South, yeah.
It looks like their sidewalk goes up to the property line, so yeah, we will, we'll be finishing those connections. And then like Jeff mentioned, we're going, we're going to have a little bridge, a pedestrian bridge that goes right over the, the creek there to, which is just south of Charing Cross. So they'll have a, a full sidewalk from, all the way from Charing Cross all the way to the intersection.
All right, and then finally, the bridge within the, the unit that connects to Sharing Cross. As I read this, there's a turnaround there now that that's going to be dismantled or whatever, and you're going to make the connection across the bridge, and you'll be able to drive very neatly from one subdivision to the other?
Correct.
Right here.
We, we are going to complete the road connection there so that Charing Cross has a second point of access. They don't, right now, it's just, I think, like a guardrail at the end of the street, and then that little turnaround. So I know when we were here last, or last time in January, a few of the residents were here and mentioned that. And we have committed and put it on the plans that we are going to remove that and restore it. I did reach out to the HOA property manager today for Charing Cross, which is Your Peace of Mind, and talked to her and said, you know, we're going to need to, I'd like to continue discussions because we, I want to talk about that. And then we're also going to give them an easement at their entrance off of Beck Road. Their, their monument sign is actually partially encroaching onto our property, so we're going to.
It's all on your property.
Or is it all on our property? I, I don't know exactly the, it's 100%. So we're going to give them an easement, we're going to work with them. So I did reach out to their HOA manager today, and she passed my information along to their HOA board, so we can start to have those discussions, but.
Because the, we're dealing with two, we're dealing with two different associations, right?
Charing Cross has an association.
No, no, I know that, but I mean, the two, these two proposed, there's going to be two different associations.
Well, you'll probably have, if there's two associations, there'll be an umbrella because they'll be assessed differently. So Cherry Hill Village has Cherry Hill Village 1 and Cherry Hill Village 2, but they have one board.
Yep.
But the, but the association, so there's one association board, but there's two different forms of assessment. So depending on whether they have two physical associations, or one with just a different assessment formulas between the attached and the, or the, the two-story houses and the detached condos, that's up to them on how they want to structure their master deed.
We'll have an overall, an overall HOA, and whether or not we have two underneath that, or one. We will have an overall one, though, that will be, we'll have to work with Charing Cross. And then, but Jeff is correct, the houses in our, in our subdivision will be assessed differently. So that, that will be worked out with our attorneys and, and when they write up the master deed, which will, I think is part of the next step.
Will there be one name for the entire?
One overall name, yeah.
One name, and then I didn't notice any, it's probably early because we haven't gone into deep, deep site plan, but obviously there would be signage at the entrances for, for this.
Yeah, we'll have, we like to do nice entry monuments with landscaping and whatnot. So both entrances will have something, we're calling it Park Creek. So some sort of stone, you know, stonewall.
Okay, so that could be carried into the corner piece there and kind of like pulled together, design-wise?
Yeah, yeah, that would be great.
All right.
We'd love to do something like that.
And then lastly, I noticed that the east en, entry off of Beck Road is not quite totally lined up with the entry to the subdivision across the street. Is there a purpose for dogging that, or?
Bill, might I just speak to this? I believe this is what the county wanted us to do. We originally did have it lined up.
It's offset to prevent interlocking lefts. So that you can't pull, pull forward too far and block somebody from turning left in the opposite direction. So Wayne County will look at the geometry later on.
Yeah, Wayne, this was the preference for Wayne County to make it safer.
I like it, okay, I'm, I'm good. Commissioner Ocharia, did you have anything?
Yes. In the last hearing, my major concern was basically the burden, the futuristic burden that the Canton Township would have for the public park. That seems to be resolved, so I'm, you know, I'm okay with that. One of the things, potential, it's a question for Jeff, is that when we look at the Cherry Hill as a model and for the 50%, the accommodation of less than 50% of the brick, can we actually have something like a to-do, a to-do list, or a definable criteria for future developers coming in to understand, you know, what would qualify for something that's in? I know there's a creative component to it, but is there?
And it's actually your call.
Okay.
So we make recommendations, like I did in conjunction with Dawn, to come up with the standards that would be appropriate for this particular design. But we may have somebody that come in and they, they may want to do New England-style salt boxes, or they may want to do a Victorian style, just like with the apartments across the street. The single apartments across the street, you know, those are Victorian. So the planning commission modified the brick requirements for, well, down, further down on Beck, you know, down north of Target, those apartments are Victorian style, they don't have any brick on them. But obviously, there's certain architectural styles that aren't conducive to use of brick. And so when we have those, we want to encourage that creativity. But it really depends on the project and what they're proposing, and whether or not you feel that it meets that criteria or not. That's, the criteria in the ordinance is for, basically for you to determine whether or not it's appropriate. So, we deal individually with these, on houses, on meets-and-bounds parcels out, you know, in the kind of, you know, hinterlands where there, where somebody might want to do a certain style of house and not do brick. And we'll work internally with the building department to determine whether or not it meets that. In one case, I required them to go to zoning board of appeals because they were appealing our administrative determination of whether or not it met the criteria or not. And in that particular case, it's a house on Napier Road, and the zoning board of appeals gave them a modification to the requirement and overturned our, our administrative determination of whether or not it met the criteria. So there's a process that goes into it, but, but, and there's, the, the language is very specific in the code that it has to meet the architectural period, you know, they have to have elements of the house that are true to the architectural period or a style of the house they're proposing. So they just can't come in and say, I want to remove the brick and do this because I like the way it looks. You know, they have to have a reason for removal of the brick. If they can do the same, you know, same house and brick, because it's not period, you know, it's not defined by a specific period, you know, obviously, we're not going to recommend removal of the brick, so.
Okay, all right. Any, oh yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just think, you know, it would be beneficial for future developers to have, you know, less of the creative discretion and more definable criteria for somebody to come in and say, okay, that could be a cost-saving if I, you know, if I know what it exactly needs to be done. So I, I get your point, and I think that's a recommendation to the board and Chairman Green to consider making this whole, you know, process a little more simplified for somebody coming in.
And, and you know, I think it's important for everybody to understand, just because it doesn't have 50% brick, it doesn't mean it's of lesser quality or less expensive. Because the materials they're putting on it are just as expensive as putting brick on the, on the house. So part of it has to do with the preference of style, and whether or not we want to allow the creativity and the flexibility of developers to create different product in the community to help differentiate their product from other products that are being built. So, I mean, that's, I mean, that's kind of where we're going with this.
Yeah, I, if, if I gave the idea that I feel that, that the designs were less quality, I apologize for that, that was not my intent. I was thinking of the Sharing Cross houses, their size, and the fact that they are mostly brick. Driving along Haverford and then driving into the subdivision, it was going to be such a drastic change in style and design that I thought, okay, well, we need to give something special here because we, we don't want that to, to look like we just cheapened the neighborhood. I like the fact that the, the brick, is it going to be brick in any case, or stone, a stone look?
It, it will be either or. It will partially be dependent on, you know, buyers, and they'll have a choice of finishes and whatnot. So my thought is, you know, we're going to have some with brick and some with stone. The stone is a little bit more towards that, the farmhouse architectural style, you might see more stone. But it will be up to the buyers.
I like the fact that it's going all the way around in the lower level. It does give it a visual grounding, and it makes it, you know, just more solid, solid look. And I, and the fact that our, our commission architect got involved, that makes me feel more comfortable as well.
So nice you guys have an architect on your commission, that's, that's not the case everywhere.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I think it's a pretty good product, you know, for Canton, I really do.
I think it's, it's a little bit different. I, I know, you know, Cherry Hill has some of it, but, but in this location, in the township, there's a lot, there's a lot of brick. And I love brick, we built a lot of brick houses. But something a little bit different that, you know, to offer buyer, something that looks a little different than what, what's already here and already all over this, you know, this corner.
Commissioner Graham.
Thing also, one of the board's goals is to have a park, a public park within walking distance, or a park of every resident. So for the, you know, developments across the street, where's the closest public park?
Well, I mean, you know, a lot of them have their own open space. So, I mean, we don't really have any parks in the southwest part of the township. So their, their closest park would be Heritage Park.
Soccer fields.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, the park's along Dent, and that's not within 10 minutes. But yeah, we've got Independence Park, and we've got Heritage Park, so they're kind of in between, so.
Also, one last question is, they're still on Schedule B, the modifications. So what did you think about that, Jeff? So you're going from R2 zoning with a lot with 100 feet to PDT, PDD proposal of 55. So a lot of, in your lot area and your setbacks are all basically cut in half. Would you also call that as part of the historic period of?
Well, no, I think what we did, it's more of a cluster concept of, you know, our, standard R2 lots would be 100-foot by 200-foot lots. So we don't have very many, you know, 20,000-square-foot lots. So in order to get to the 57% open space, you know, you've got to reduce the lot size down. So the issue is, is one of the things in the market that we're seeing is a lot of new buyers don't want huge yards. You know, a lot of times the R3-sized lots, which were 85 by 150s, was Canton's gold standard. Most people don't even want that anymore because they don't want to mow and those kinds of things. So if they can have the, their yard area and parks and open space, they'd prefer that and just, you know, have a small yard that they can put, you know, a swing set or something on, you know, for the smaller kids. So this is a whole different product because most of it's going to a more of a senior empty nester type of product as detached condos, which is a whole different product. So what they have to do is they have to compare what we would normally get in the schedule of modifications. They have to compare what we would normally get in R2, which was the standard 100-foot by 200-foot lot with big setbacks. And they just have to compare it and come up with their own schedule of regulations. So if you feel that's appropriate for this area, given the amenities, given the layout, given the types of units they're proposing, you know, that's, you know, part of what the, a plan development does, is provide that flexibility to flex those standards to, to do a little bit more unique, so.
Yeah, because I was going to ask also, this is one of my questions about basement. Yeah, because I was going to ask also, this was one of my questions, about basements? If it was going to be, I know you're not dedicated to seniors or 55 and up, but it's going to be there available. Is that something that you would build any of these with just slab construction, or would they all have basements?
We typically build the majority of our homes with basements. I, grading-wise, we might be able to do a few slabs, which makes it a little bit more of affordable. The plan would be basements, though, and, you know, unless, once we get into the engineering, if there's certain lots that, you know, grading-wise would make sense to do some slabs, we actually would consider-
I didn't know if that was going to be an offering initially to buyers to, you know, build without the basement, just because some people don't want basements.
It's not proposed at this point.
Yeah, that this, when we get into the grading, we can definitely look at that, but at this point, we would be planning on basements for all.
Yeah, Grandview, which is going after the same market, they have, you know, out of the 100 and some units out there, they've only got three or four without basements. So it does become a grading issue because when you're, when you have to lift up the house to put the basement under it, and then you have a house next door that's on slab, you have to make sure there's enough space in between them to do those grade differentials from a drainage standpoint. Sometimes when the houses are this tight, that doesn't work.
I understand. The housing, the condo unit to the east has no basements.
Oh, really? Okay. The, directly to the east, right across back?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, those are fourplexes. That's a whole different kind of product.
Yeah, it's a different product, but-
Right, different product, yep.
So if they're for seniors- Are you also going to have the wider doorways for wheelchairs or 88, you know?
We certainly can. Any of our, any of our houses, we can, we can modify to make the wider doorways, and we do build a few of them that way. But anyone that came in and wanted a new house, that option, the doorway is wider and all of that can be done.
All right, well, then, want to entertain a motion?
I would love to make a motion. I move to recommend preliminary approval of the Park Creek Planned Development District on tax parcels as noted in the agenda, as shown on the concept plan and commitments outlined in the draft plan development agreement.
Support.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Bennett. Any last-minute discussion items concerns concepts? Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Ocharia?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
It's a yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Nikki, for the work on the plans.
What's their next step now?
They go to the board for preliminary PDD at the end of the month, and then they have to come back for you for final PDD and/or preliminary site plan.
Jeff, do you know the date of that board meeting?
The fourth Tuesday, whatever the fourth Tuesday is.
Fourth Tuesday? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for enduring the process.
No, it's fine.
Our third agenda item of the night is Fire Station Number Two expansion. We're considering a site plan approval. This property is located north of Warren, between Lily and Hagerty Roads, right next to the fire station. Jeff, could you tell us more?
Yes, we have our Mike Malone from Partners in Architecture with us tonight. Mike, if you want to go on up to the podium, we've got Chris Dockline, our deputy director in fire, with us today. They're overseeing the project for the rebuild of Fire Station Number Two. So they've gotten through special land use. You saw the special land use plan. They're working on the details of the site plan currently. They've got a couple of variances that the ZBA approved for relative to some setbacks, and those are all in place. So now they've got the site plan in front of you tonight. So essentially, the plan that you saw for special land use is not a whole lot different, the site plan is not a whole lot different than that. Let me get the plan up here at a scale I can see. The site's very complicated. This is on the north side of Warren Road between Hagerty and Lily Road. There's a lot of wetlands and floodplain on the site, so the building will be hugged pretty close to Warren Road. So it's under R5 zoning, so, you know, they have enough depth to get their, you know, fire trucks in and out from the road. But it is, it is pretty intimate a location for the site, but it has a very residential flavor to it. We will bring up the architectures in a minute. They did need to receive a wetland setback from the back where the parking lot abuts the wetlands in the back. They needed a variance to the buffer area in the back, and they have to do, I think they're removing minimal wetlands that they can avoid doing mitigation on, based on the minimal amount of wetlands they're disturbing. In the front, there's a hose tower in the southeast corner of the building, right up here where the arrow is. Because that goes higher than the rest of the building, they require additional setback for that. Well, there's no place else to put the hose tower. They can't move that hose tower away from the front setback because that's where the hoses have to hang. So, and from an architectural standpoint, that's how it works in the building. So they need a variance to the front setback on that. So the ZBA granted them a variance, allowing them the flexibility to come within 30 feet of the front property line for that portion of the building. You know, Mike is here tonight. He can go over the plans with you. I'll kind of scroll through the drawings, and Mike can explain to you what's happening on the site and what's happening with the building.
Hey, Jeff. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
How are you?
I'm doing great. How are you guys?
Anything you'd like to add to what Jeff has said?
I think Jeff pretty well covered. I mean, we do have a very difficult site, and it's going to, it's all going to work out in the end here, but, you know, there's some tight constraints for us to construct the new building. That's why we asked for the couple of variances that we did, and we did get those granted. The wetlands issue is something we're still working on and will continue to work on with the MDEQ. And the stormwater management is something that's still in question as far as our approach versus what the township is really looking for. So we have a further meeting, actually, this Wednesday with Wayne County to kind of work out another scenario that the township wants us to look at. But aside from that, I think everything is pretty well on the plans. You know, we do have some additional comments, excuse me, that we received that we will be updating the plans for our final approval, but-
Yeah, before it goes to the township board, we want them to resolve the stormwater design issue, and there's some landscape plan changes they need to make. But we don't want them to make all those changes until they resolve what the final stormwater design is going to look like.
From the commission, Commissioner Ocharia, anything?
No questions at this question.
Commissioner Graham Hudak?
So what I don't see in here, I see you connecting the power, but would this level of plan have the detail where we talked about looking at maybe geothermal for utility savings and-
That's not, that's not part of this submittal yet, but our mechanical engineer actually has done an analysis of several mechanical systems that we're going to be presenting to the fire department, probably in the coming week, to kind of review the scenarios, the potential paybacks of each system, and then kind of make a decision as far as what direction to go in.
Okay, because I noticed, I mean, when you look at your plans, some of them, they do hook up to utilities. Is that just temporary until you decide?
It's anticipated locations at this point, yeah. It's not fully engineered by any means.
Can you tell us what type of other systems you're looking at, just a list of them quickly?
Well, we have a standard forced air system, which is similar to what you have at your other fire stations. I believe we looked at a geothermal system, and Nate from my office is here as well. He can chime in on that. Is there a third system, Nate?
Yes, it's kind of a water-to-boiler system.
So hot water heat?
Yes.
Okay.
Using basically the water maybe from the flood area there, or just basically a contained unit, or-
That would be self-contained. But it's an efficient system. There's more upfront cost, but we'll look at the paybacks as far as, you know, what you can endure on day one versus over the life of the building.
Then, did you look at anything for solar? Is that included in some of the things you're looking at?
That's part of our analysis as well. I don't know if the engineer had done that yet, but we had preliminary conversations, I think, with his body previously, or with the, actually with the township board, about looking into those potential, you know, approaches. And we have a preliminary system that we actually budgeted, but it's not really figured out as far as how much will it power and, you know, that kind of thing. But we will be considering that.
What we're looking at now is basically, Jeff, we're looking at, we're just approving where it is now, and it'll-
Right, yeah, this is the basic site plan and layout of the site. So we're not getting into building systems. We're not getting into, you know, construction details of the building at this point. So this is the shell of the building. This is where it sits. This is where the parking lot. This is the landscaping. So that's all you're looking at. So that'll be a question between Chris, you, and the board.
Layout in terms of the, where the dorms are laid out and everything is, well, we know, compared to what it is right now, that's better.
Yeah, it's a lot better. As a matter of fact, that was part of the design that we had talked about, was making sure that, you know, because seconds count for us, that they have the quickest route from the bedrooms out into that apparatus bay to get into the vehicles. But Partners has incorporated a lot of, a lot of those systems into the design so that we can have the fastest response up to and including those bifold doors instead of overhead doors, so that those doors can open quickly and the apparatus can get out at a faster rate. Safer and faster.
So that you basically time, I mean, you have dorms on the total opposite side where the trucks will be, but that's all timed into your design?
Yep. As you can see, like, there's a straight shot, you know, from the bedrooms here, straight out into the bay. Oops. Some straight across here, and then you can get right into the bay, and then same on the backside here, so you can get out into the bay in that area there. So it's just kind of a quick flow of work.
So the corridors are aligned with the entrances to the apparatus room.
Your workout room is no longer the laundry room.
That's right.
You have to go, you guys really should go tour this.
Go see the old one.
Yeah, see the old one before.
And no longer men and females locker rooms, so all shared. So that'll make a big difference for us in the future, too, as we continue diversifying the workforce.
Questions? I think this looks really nice, as I said last time.
Yeah, this is a very welcome change. I have a question. I think we may have talked about that at the last meeting. The, obviously, the need is greater now for the services. This is, this unit is going to provide. So there's going to be more runs, right? Anticipate it. Has there been any problem in terms of getting out onto Warren Road? I know that for Fire Station One, there's the capacity to change the light at Heritage and Canton Center, but you don't have a light here. Is that, because you're going to have more runs, anticipate it, is that going to develop into a problem for getting out onto Warren Road, you think?
We've actually already talked with Partners, and we're going to be dealing with the county. We are going to install an emergency light at this station as well. So that's in the plans. And as a matter of fact, we had an accident with a vehicle pooling in there that was rear-ended just a couple of years ago. So it's definitely needed.
Yeah, okay, all right. That's all that I had on this. I'm looking forward to it. Anybody else? Commissioner Bennett?
More of a logistical question for Jeff. I see that the state, the new station, it looks like it spans two parcels. Can you kind of tell me, I guess, why wasn't it combined? Why weren't the parcels combined?
Doesn't really, well, it doesn't make any difference because they're, when we bought the parcels, if we combine them, they're tax-exempt anyway. So they're actually, we bought two additional parcels, one to each side of the fire station. One is being used, the other one, we don't actually need for the fire station. It'll become the open space area around the fire station. You know, we could combine them for tax purposes, but since we don't pay taxes, it's, you know, inconsequential, so.
And if you can talk the supervisor into purchasing the one to the east, that'll help us out, too.
Commissioner Okon?
Just one simple question. I'm assuming the existing fire station will remain open until this one is completed?
Yeah, that was a big part of the planning that we had some difficulty with because we really need to have that station operational while we're under construction. And that's where the old station will be, basically where that parking lot's at right now on the west side, and that will remain in use while they finish the construction.
Great. Looking forward to it.
Okay.
What you see is the parking lot, yeah, the parking lot's on, that's on the west side of the building. That's where the existing station is. You can see the dotted line where the existing station is. So it'll be a complicated site for construction, and hopefully we can manage the phasing of that effectively.
I have a raising ceremony for that.
Can we implode it?
I would just recommend that everybody go see the old one. I mean, you really need to see it.
Well, you never saw the old Fire Station One either, did you?
That's true.
I did.
Anyways, any further discussion from the commission?
Chairman Green, I'd like to make a motion.
You can do that.
Thank you. I move to recommend approval of the proposed site plan for Fire Station Number Two on said parcels, including the landscaping modification, accepting the buffer treatment along the east property line, subject to completion of the stormwater design and correction of the landscape, oh, stormwater design and correction of the landscape plan prior to consideration of the site plan by the Board of Trustees.
Support.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Bennett. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Ocharia?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
It's a yes. That's right. Good luck.
You very much.
Thanks.
Yep. Next step for this project, Jeff?
It'll go to the township board when they make all the corrections to the plan, so.
All right, we have some, well, we have a public hearing to set for April 1st. It's not an April Fool's joke, is it? Hayden's multi-tenant, where it's a public hearing for property located south of Ford and east of lots. Do I hear a motion to set that public hearing?
So moved.
By Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Graham Hudak. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Jeff, what is, why do they have to have a special land use for that?
Now, if you recall, the, over the corporate park overlay district there, everything is a special land use.
Ah, okay.
So when Hayden's first came in as a restaurant, I think that was done before the overlay district was adopted. So every use in there, so every use, so they're going to convert the building to a multi-tenant building. So restaurant use may be part of it. I think a dental clinic is proposed as part of it instead of other retailer service uses. So they'll have like three tenants in there.
Need more dentists.
So basically, what they have to identify is every single use in there that they potentially could put in there. So you'll have, you'll have a litany of uses that'll be recommended, that'll be reviewed as part of the special land use. And then they'll bring in a site plan after that for a retrofit of the building and the site, because they'll be, you know, doing some parking and changes in the site relative to the traffic patterns, so.
Okay, all right. Anything else from the commission? Anything to discuss? Anything going on at all?
Okay, no questions.
No questions, nothing? We got a motion to adjourn and support. All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, we are done.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.